Alright, so calling the meeting to order for panel select board. Regular meeting for Thursday, July 25th, 2019. On the agenda tonight, we have an agenda approval. Warrants, mail, public comment, town administrator's report, which will consist of approval of internal control policy, approval of web policy, approval of hiking trail policy, approval of ethics policy, railroad damage issue at hydro plant, approval of Thomas Lankowski as third auditor, approval of Mike Gardner as zoning administrator, approval of Tiffany Zwing as health officer, sign language for Huzick hiking trail, presentation of portrait on behalf of Mr. Clark Villanova. Then old business, town office update. The new business, Jay landscaping regarding approval of additional cemetery grounds work. Then we'll be entering into executive session for personnel policy. And then hopefully we'll adjourn. So, is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, I think we need to make a correction. We need to enter as a discussion for personnel and just for policy.
So strike personnel, just say personnel.
And we have to take the web policy off.
Yeah, we're gonna reschedule the web policy. And do you guys wanna try to schedule for a day next week and do a special meeting? To come in and do a little workshop on it?
Sure.
Alright, what day works for the board?
Twenty-five.
Tuesday would be best for me.
I'm okay.
Any day works for me.
Monday actually works better.
And does that enough time to warn?
Monday or Wednesday.
For Monday? Monday? Alright, so what time? Six, six thirty-seven?
Six.
Does six work for you, Marley?
Yeah, I can deal with six.
Alright, so Monday for six.
Please forgive me, I can't read my phone right now, but I'll forget.
That's fine. Monday for six for what policy?
Web policy?
Yep. It's to hammer out the details of it, it's not to pass it. It's to hammer out the details of it.
Workshop.
Forty-five.
Okay, flip back. Alright, fixed it. I'll wait till I'm at it on camera so I don't get so short-tracked. Do you see it again? Alright, so we're striking web policy off of it. Any other changes to the agenda for tonight? Okay, alright, I'll hear a motion to approve the agenda then.
Motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Alright. Hear a motion and a second to approve the agenda with changes. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, agenda's approved. Alright, so, greeting of the warrants.
Approval of the minutes.
Yeah, the minutes aren't on here, actually.
I had to take them off because they're not, I need to redo them.
Okay. So it wasn't just a table, then?
No, a draft is posted on the web, but I want to redo it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Alright, so on to warrants. So for payroll ending seven fourteen in the amount of $10,723.39. Payroll ending seven twenty-one in the amount of $12,822.99. Accounts payable three on seven nineteen in the amount of $12,148.19. Accounts payable number four on seven twenty-six in the amount of $80,559.11. We'll hear a motion to approve the warrants. Second? Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the warrants. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, we seem to have an oversight. Our auditor is here to do an auditor's report. And it's the last Thursday of the month, the last auditor's report's supposed to be on the agenda. And I just realized it's not.
You see a person now?
I'm here for a person now.
You're not here, David, to give a report?
No.
Oh, okay.
So, greeting of the mail. Michael, you got any interesting mail for us?
Yes, sir. To Vermont City City Town Health Officer webinar. Second Annual Vermont Community Leadership Summit. It's on August 12th in Vermont Technical College. Mr. Walter Klinger sent us a letter on Thursday, 18th of July. He's attending a meeting attended by County Grayside Commission with presenters discussing food and community. Discussing public support for operations for agriculture. It's quite a fascinating letter, I encourage everyone to read it.
Thank you.
Sorry. You have a total of fourteen responses from the internet regarding VATV orders.
That's all?
And finally, presenting to you on behalf of Mr. Carl Villanova is a certified copy, numbered copy, from Saturday Evening Post, May 21st, 1960. And it has a painting of Powell. Would like to get that on camera, if that'd be great. Got it? Go pass that around, that's presented to us. And that is all the mail, sir.
That is very nice. Thank you, Carl. So, Michael, you will draft an official thank you letter for us this afternoon? That's nice. And pick an appropriate place to display it.
I know.
All the...
The headline. If you have a moment, take a peek at the... You get it. The headline from the Saturday Evening Post was interesting for that time period.
So, moving on to public comment? There's no further mail? Alright, so public comment?
Yes.
Sorry, he had his hand up first. So, please state your name.
My name is Leo Hagerty. And I actually have a couple of issues that I need to be brought before the board. One of them would be my interview as health officer. And the other would be responses from the town administrator following that interview. One of the processes for applying for the job as health officer was there was a deadline. And it was stated by the... yourself, that applications were received after the deadline. And I don't think that's appropriate. I think the town hasn't accepted them in the past after a deadline, and they shouldn't be doing it now. Furthermore, I don't think the questioning at the interview was appropriate. I don't think that the question of, if you overhear somebody talking bad about the select board, how would you handle that? I don't think that's an appropriate question for a health officer position. You're there to do a health officer job. Ninety percent of the questions had nothing to do with the health officer's job, with the exception of going on somebody's property. There was that. And then, you know, the town in the past has not accepted applications. I believe they had a review where they had BCRC or something like that come in and put in a bid. And somebody put in a bid afterwards for a town review. And that wasn't accepted because it was after the bid time. So, I don't believe that it's acceptable to take applications after an application deadline. The other is, when I had talked to Mike about it, I sent him emails. Basically, I said, well, if somebody else was chosen beside me for other reasons other than my current position, I said, what are their qualifications? Are they, and their professional background? And what is the town's process for hiring somebody? And I got told, I understand you're upset, but it's not the town's responsibility to explain that to you.
Okay, so, hold on. I'm gonna issue a little bit of your response. In regards to your second question, I was CC'd on the emails. And that was based, the response was based on legal advice from town attorney. So that's all I'll say to that. That was, the response was based on advice from our town attorney.
That you don't hire people with professional backgrounds?
No, our response was...
We do, but we can't give you that information.
Why can't you give, once a resume is submitted, it's public information? Is it not?
I am merely stating what we were told from our attorney.
Okay.
As far as that goes, that's what I'm saying. As far as your, as far as the issue with accepting an application late, we had made a decision to accept the application late because we'd only had one person late. She'd only applied a few days after the deadline. I'm more than happy to...
Didn't you tell me the night of the 26th?
Yes, I did.
Of June, that it had to be in by the 28th?
Yes.
What's, if it's in by, if it's not in by the 28th, then it's not in by the 28th?
No, she, she had expressed interest before that, but we didn't receive the letter 28th.
She, she had the opportunity to turn it in beforehand because she turned it in for the zoning administrator.
So, we will be discussing that later on in the agenda as far as the appointment, so we will... We'll go from there on that. But I appreciate you coming in, Mr. Hagerty. And I appreciate your comments. There's nothing farther? Any other public comment?
No, not for me. Just want to announce that this Saturday...
Please state your name for the cameras.
Yeah, Ray Rogers. This Saturday, starting at 10:00 a.m., there's gonna be a walk along the burn at the wastewater treatment facility, led by John Sock, John Ayers. And his purpose is to help people identify invasive species and learn what they might do about them.
What time on Saturday?
Starting at 10:00 a.m. And afterward, people can go to the fair.
Yeah.
Just gotta mention, you're competing with the fair.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other public comment? Alright, moving on to the town administrator's report.
Yes, sir. Internal control policy. It's distributed to you by administrative assistant. Nope, treasurer. And therefore your approval for a... News.
Changes are in yellow.
So the items that are in yellow are... Are what is being proposed for language?
Yes, ma'am. There was corrections and/or additions.
So do we want to take time to scrutinize this?
Yeah.
And then maybe put it on the agenda for the next regular meeting for the approval or feedback? And then we can give our feedback.
Thank you.
Your next item...
Alright, so please add that to the agenda for our next scheduled meeting.
And next would be approval of hiking trail policy. Very straightforward. Follows the State Forest Treaty Guide line.
Thank you for clarifying that. Because when you sent out the information about sign language, I was a little lost.
That's a clarification, that's the language upon a sign.
Yeah, that's, I thought, what? I never thought it was about the use of sign language.
Your approval.
Did we make any changes from the last time we talked about this?
This is the first time. She sent it to you in the email.
Okay, so this is different than when...
No, Ray, Ray Brad stopped that.
That you wanted to put on the signs.
Alright, so I think I want to... I think we probably should, well, who we decided in the previous tour, and I think we probably are going to continue that, is that we're not gonna approve things the first time we see them. But we are gonna discuss them, and then we can put them on the agenda for the next time. Another thing I want to do, because it does tie into it, I think we oughta, I'm sorry, we ought to pass this before we agree on the sign, because the sign adheres to the policy.
That makes sense.
Well, it says right in there in part two, "The Recreation Task Force shall define language used for the trail sign upon approval of the select board." I, I'm sorry. Well, just to make it clear, is this the town's recreational task force or private organization's recreational task force? I don't think we ought to be referencing the town as recreational task force. We have a recreation, we have a recreation group, it's called. But the Recreation Task Force is a private entity, right? So they're not subject to being, or they're not subject to all those other things, they're not a government entity.
So we should just change it to read, "Trail signs shall..."
That might be, that might be better. But, but I guess we're not...
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Next, please.
Yep.
At Ms. Collins' request, you're not going to talk to the ethics policy. And next item would be railroad damage issue of the hiking rights, Mr. Scott is here to describe. And what damage has been done, and what's been done to...
Your choice. Stand, sit, hold for the table, as long as you...
So my name's Noel Scully. From Mississippi River Hydro. And I've been emailing Michael for a while about damage caused by Pan Am. And I do think the Pan Am is a simple fix. And I can't go into too many details of the session. Needless to say, there's a variety of issues fixing it. So, part of this is an on property that's outside the fence. Part of it is inside. So, the town owning the property, that means we should probably have a check on this. A variety of these. Colleagues, it's a trespass, and there was an issue to... So I really wanted to find out from you all, but how do you see this? It's been by a shop owner for seven or eight months. They are not, they are completely not responsible. And to give you an idea, they cut down a bunch of trees and wanted access to the village. To begin, just to clarify, on the town, but I'm not... I sent along some information, they actually don't want the state property, they want to take way outside the property. They cut actual metal objects on the property. Uncovered metals. I guess the question for you all is how much money does that cost?
I would say this probably warrants an executive session.
That's what I thought.
This is gonna encroach into legal matters, so this is gonna go to executive session. It's too late to add him, well, he's already here a couple weeks. Put him on the executive tonight?
Right now, Ray. I make a motion, we don't think that's an exception.
Well, we'll have to ask everybody who's... Or you have to say? I mean, who is it? If you wouldn't do it second? Is that allowed?
How much time do you think you'll need?
Well, the issue is that we'd have to have everybody be on the camera, so I'd have to walk them in. That's why it'd be...
I've seen that happen before.
He's willing to wait.
If he's willing to wait, then, okay.
Thank you.
We'll move you to the end. Alright, my name is Mr. Scully.
Next, we would seek your approval for Thomas Lankowski as a third auditor.
Lankowski.
Lankowski, thank you for...
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tom Lankowski as an auditor. Does anybody here know Mr. Lankowski? I worked with Mr. Lankowski for years at the hospital. He's a former CFO.
I know him.
If David knows him, would you like to say a few words about him? Would he make a good auditor? Is he knowledgeable? Does he have a background in accounting and finance?
He was associated with the hospital for many years. And I know him through my religious organization. And I think the town would be very lucky to have him.
Thank you, David.
Did he submit a letter of interest or a resume of that kind?
Not to me. But I, I think, I'm not sure how that letter was processed.
Is there signing a file? There's not one. I could see a resume, it was quite...
I meant, that's in government, I mean, certain letters.
We need a license CD.
And we have no letter of interest from him. True.
Like you're banging on the door.
Well, I was just wondering if you had the letter of interest or was I my handy? Hi.
Hi.
Alright, so you were...
I have a motion. A second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve Thomas Lankowski as a third auditor. All in, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. This is, just so we understand, march.
Just for the rest of the year. Alright, so, moving on to approval of Mike Gardner as zoning administrator.
Yes, sir. Michael is recommended by zoning, or the planning commissioner.
So the planning commission interviewed me, and this was their recommendation to the board?
Motion to approve Mike Gardner as zoning administrator? Second.
We have motion and a second to approve Mike Gardner as zoning administrator. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So, moving on to the approval of Tiffany Zwing as health officer. I would say, in light of what Mr. Hagerty has said, and in the interest of fairness and abiding by rules, I would, as acting health officer right now, as nominated by the state, I'm going to withdraw her nomination at this point. And I would like to recommend that we repost the position for, I would say, the next month. We take new applications, and if anybody submits a new application after that deadline, they will not be allowed. That would be my recommendation.
What's the deadline? Let's be very specific as to what the deadline is.
Well, let's call the deadline 30 days from today.
Only, you're limited to...
To August?
August 25th.
August 25th.
And there's, and I told you, Mr. Chairman, that there's an established job description?
Yeah.
That's posted.
Please repost it.
Yes, sir.
And make it clear in the ad that any late applications, letters of interest, will not be considered.
Can I ask where that job description is located?
Should be on the website.
Okay, 'cause I don't... I...
I saw, I saw the previous one.
If you need assistance, let us know, and we'll make sure that a hard copy gets quickly transferred.
Alright, so is the rest of the board okay with that? Alright, so, sign language for Huzick hiking trail, which we've kinda already touched on now. Because we have the hiking trail policy.
Language for the Huzick hiking trail signs.
In the interest of people with disabilities.
I was trying to figure that out. So, is that tabled?
Yeah, where everybody's to review the hiking trail policy. And then we will talk about that next week. And get the official one to go online. So, we already had the portrait presentation.
Yep. And I just want to circle back around to the ethics policy. You all have it. Please review it. Submit any changes to Michael. Once we have everybody's comments before the next board meeting, we do have to submit it up to the BLCT for review. It should have been emailed out to everybody.
Alright, so, old business, moving on. Town office update. Would you please introduce yourself?
Pauline Gallow. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray. So just in case people didn't hear, it's Pauline Gallow.
Yeah, right. Been working in a few different areas. One is starting the permitting process I actually had downed last week. And then, I made tons of phone calls in order to get the permitting going. And of course, we have to have the bond. Then I came up with a lot of comments. I would like your opinion.
Should we invite our new zoning administrator to the table?
Yes, he is official.
Come on over. Come on up, Michael.
Will you join us, Mr. Gardner? Congratulations.
You get to sit at the big kid's table.
Yeah, there you go.
You can sit down if you want to.
No, I'm good.
We all see this, so...
Just lay it out, we can stand up. And if any members of the public want to come over and take a peek, they're welcome to.
Okay. So, we took two things that are a bit different. Are, we have this airlock. Actually, that gentleman today who does its installation, we gotta find a better way of, a better bid on it. I mean, it was $3,500 for one door. That's what crazy it seems to me. So I have a whole, I have several...
Is that with electric access?
Yes, that's what's the hard part.
I was gonna say, you got the average cost.
That's average, but it's average cost. You're doing like four doors. We could have four more doors.
No, it's one door, yeah. Okay. No, whenever you do the updates on different properties, it's about $3,500 per door.
But by all means, if you can find it cheaper and it serves the same function, I think we'd be okay with that.
But I would think with the construction, there's no wall in the way. So that's a surprise, Michael. Okay.
Yeah. Great. So, one of the ideas I think you brought up, like, was just simply, and this was to remove the desk over, put glass, move the piece back, so that we'll have clear view from here. Okay. Sort of on that same day, I came up with an idea over here for the select board. Okay. If by making the restroom here a bit shorter, was able to get a door in here, because remember before, this is where we had that little tight little room for you guys to go into an executive session. Okay. But, that, and if the door was here. Yeah, but I thought, okay, what the heck? Why not move the door over here? There's already a window. And this door exists. We'll make an airlock here. Because most of the board meetings are at night, and nobody's gonna be over here anyway. So, yeah, and we can use this space here as a multi-use office, and forget storage because we probably don't need it anyway. I went around and checked out all the storage system. And with this, and with putting some just coverage in the particular offices, so they had their own paper supply and so forth, it's fine. I think it works out really good for storage. And to that point, the more I thought of that, we could, remember I spoke about putting a closet here? I don't think we need to. I think this space is better served by using it for our zoning, our bogey. Setting up our bogey here. Haven't seen, we ever did need it, we can always add it anyway. So...
So just leaving it open space?
Yeah, leaving it open space for now. I think it needs...
Linda, see this too?
Linda, yeah.
Yeah, and Julie did too, actually. Any feedback on that?
No, I didn't really get to take an extensive look at it. I just peeked at it. It's a work in progress.
Oh, I thought you...I thought you were comfortable with it. Okay.
What I saw, I was.
If you want to pop in tomorrow and take a better look at it, that's okay.
Okay.
But I'm not so busy.
Okay. Alright, so we'll do that.
And our coffee is in the morning.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Any other proposed changes or anything?
Well, no, not proposed changes. Just talking about money. I got with Chuck Watson. He actually put in all these. And some of what we have, I guess, could be moved over there. His quote is about five thousand dollars. And...
For the...
Five thousand for the technology?
Yeah, for the phones, the hookups downstairs and the IT number for all IT.
Okay.
Actually talked to cat and eagle as well, trying to find out how best they could build the board plus the audience. And it seems like if we put some sort of connection about halfway, they can more easily move the panel to adjust either. And so we can do that. Maybe, and I was looking at this tonight, it would be really helpful. Everybody was all on one side, so maybe we can get along on the table.
Is it great use for your store, right?
Well, it never is. And besides that, if it was in, it's gonna have an auction.
Oh, really?
A tag seller, an auction. I think an auction for the old ways.
Yeah.
I actually called and asked if it was chairs.
Harry, they're great chairs.
Anything that can be donated is greatly appreciated.
Maybe we should reach out to Southern Vermont.
I was gonna say Sunderland did that with Orbis.
Oh, you're right.
Orbis donated all their office furniture.
I mean...
Saved them like thirty thousand dollars.
Depending on their status, they may or may not be able to sell stuff. They may have to donate it to charitable causes.
So free is always better.
Yeah, free is better.
Okay, alright. Now, just one more thing. When I submit this to preferred builders, we'll get one more chance to make changes without any additional cost. But for this, it's gonna cost two thousand dollars for the next grant. So how would you like the payment? Michael's credit card?
Well, we have checks. You know, they say you got checks, you got checks, got money.
That's okay.
So there is a... There is a town hall fund that still has, I believe, about a hundred sixty, a hundred eighty thousand.
It's over two hundred. It's over two twelve or something.
Let's finish writing. I'm sure she...
But I would probably send Julie the...
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Make sure everybody has a chance to review this.
So the question was, we have town office fund, right? She's looking.
Oh, sorry.
Paul, you have a question? Is this...they're coming in here with your airlock. So you're gonna push a button, you have a card, or the average person, public, is gonna push a button?
But they're gonna push the button. No, 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 it's like a doorbell. I think what they mean is a doorbell.
Oh, yeah.
To be buzzed on.
Right, but they're gonna be able to come into this airlock.
Yeah.
Okay, and then they're gonna push a button in here, inside the airlock.
Yeah.
And the town clerk is gonna be able to visually see them.
Yeah.
Yes.
Or the tower.
Because the door was initially here, but then she said, I suggested to put it in a handle.
So my question, I guess my question is, this is fine.
That's why there's a window there.
That's a window.
This is a window. But so if the town administrator, this is right here. But they're gonna...this is gonna be a little bit...the line of sight?
Yeah, I know.
But I think these are windows, aren't they?
Those are, I think, you know, why not? Let's make those windows.
Oh, I thought that's what you would say.
Yeah, no, I thought you would...I thought that you would make that window so that it could be seen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir?
Town Office Fund as of last June eighteen...two thousand and eighteen had a total of one hundred ninety-three thousand dollars in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very close.
What?
It's roughly close, even if we step a little bit.
That was my thing. I was looking at the line of sight, thinking that's gonna be...you know, that's a pretty tight line.
I guess it's tight.
Just an observation.
No, no, that's a good one. I mean, I could chop this off a little bit.
Well, what...I know it would be more money, but... Can you get an estimate on what it would cost to put a security camera in that could display to a monitor in the town administrator's office?
Put a doorbell in there to wire the doorbell.
Yeah, that's something you can just walk over and look.
Well, that's kind of...just my opinion. Here I am, raised. Open to my mouth first thing. That's a good... I did this for a while, okay? You know, if you're town administrator, then you're doing something. And now without the monitor or without that line of sight, now, now they have to get up and physically come out here.
Well, they're gonna have a buzzer.
But to see who it is.
Well, they shouldn't buzz anybody in without...
Right, if somebody, if some random Joe comes up here and pushes your buzzer, he's gonna...you know, they should wanna know who's coming in.
But this is true, but them too.
Right, but I mean, the town administrator may be working with the town clerk either.
Yeah.
Right, but I mean...
Yeah. Sometimes the town clerk's not here.
Right, but she's gonna have a buzzer. He or she's gonna have much better line of sight.
I like the idea of last week.
I'm just...I'm just gonna double that thinking already.
Yep.
Sorry.
No, that's...we want to...but that's the whole point. We want this.
How about...
Yeah.
That's really...
Well, I think the answer...well, I think the answer is monitor and a camera. That's my opinion.
If you have a monitor and a camera, do you really need that to have a card and all that? Or do you just have a doorbell and you look to see who it is? And they get up and they go over.
So here's a thought. No, here's a thought that I meant. The zoning administrator is in the office how much time? About that. We have a multi-function office right here.
Yes.
Can we do something different with the zoning administrator office? Get rid of that old camera? But then he really can't see. The desk is here.
I think...
I mean, that's what says desk.
What's...
Yeah, but then you're gonna wanna wall off so we can shut the door and have privacy.
Right.
Yeah, I thought this was a good idea because that's a tax.
Right.
I have that open.
Okay.
Just a quick reminder. I...you know, I understand that. I just, you know, I'm just going by... I have to go down to schools all the time.
I have an updated figure for this year, hundred thirty, it's two hundred and one thousand.
Two hundred and...so it is overturned.
Two hundred and one.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I don't know. Do we really...do we need this?
Does secure entrance?
Yes, we should.
We wanna secure it.
We want that.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright. So a lot of feedback early on regarding the whole new town office was the insurance.
What if she's not there and Michael's not here?
Then they can't see anything.
That's the purpose of a doorbell.
Right. And then you just have to get up and...
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think you can cover all of it.
Right.
Right, yes.
So Linda is here more than anybody just now. So...so the bell rings into Linda's office.
Well, I think the general doorbell would ring throughout.
Throughout, right.
But be in the common area.
You could tie it in...you could tie it into the intercount.
And some people may be waiting for individuals so they know that they'd be getting up and taking those in.
Okay. So we can put it...why don't we just put the doorbell in here for the listers? Town administrator, administrator assistant, and treasurer. Well, we should do that too, the treasurer. Well, then we put it in these...
You're talking about when you say door release.
Water treatment. She don't have windows in your office.
Are you talking about doorbell?
We have to the front.
So great.
Right, but you can't see it was at the front door. So if somebody's buzzing at the front door, we have security. Right. But do you have something feeding into your office? Like, do you have a security monitoring that feeds that? Yeah.
So what do you think?
Yeah, I don't know. I think just leave it as is.
Yeah, then we're gonna add...
We have to add a security camera.
I think that's...
So don't do anything more than you're saying.
I think as of right now...
I would say just a security camera fed to a monitor.
Because we could get this wired in.
Right.
Are we gonna do last week here?
Right.
So you can see that out there?
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you. Oh, now, but how is that set?
Do we wish to have wires run through here for potential doorbell?
Or just... Well, I think the doorbell still needs to run through out.
Or is it wireless?
Well, ask Chuck what it would take to tie it into the phone system. Because that's what MyMel did for our back entrances is you push the button and it rings. It rings to specific phones. They tie it right in.
It's done right for the computers.
Right.
So we have a voice over IP system for the phone system so you can type so much into it. You just control it from the computer.
I would say talk to...get a hold of Chuck and mention it to Chuck. Because if we already have the system, we're putting it in. Let's use all the functions.
And I believe First Choice is the vendor that supplied us with the VOIP, the voice over IP system. So we have to reach out to them and get permission for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck has a lot of security systems, so I'm sure he can help you.
Yeah.
Okay, so any more on town office update? Any more questions for the public before we move on?
Uh, no, so I just...
Oh, I have one quick question. Somebody called me today and they said it looks like something's fallen off the house, some of the siding or some of the wooden...
Oh, we got there. No, we actually tried to get in there to see what was on the roof. Like, what...
Okay. Okay.
It's not a problem.
That's the part that just drapes down over the house and the wall, isn't it?
Yeah. It was so it would be the siding. It was a dark woods road. North County Road.
Although all the old residential was northbound and dark woods.
Yeah.
Okay, so I...so when this is complete, then I'm authorized to submit it to preferred builders for the final plan. And again, we'll have one more chance to...
Yeah.
Because we need that. Oh, I do that.
Do we need it?
We need this if we're gonna start PR.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're about a site.
We have that. And then... Oh, yeah. I was talking, working on wording for this to be working.
Eleanor, you have that? Um, you have...when do you submit the overall plan? The overall project plan? Is it after that's approved? Or after the...after the vote?
Permitted.
After permitted, okay.
So do we wanna authorize the spending of the money for preferred builders? Or do we want Polly to come back one more time with the final?
Come back one more time with the final. Because then once it's submitted, we have one more opportunity to make any changes. I wanna make sure Linda...
Well, she had asked if we were authorizing to spend the money.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because she wants...because I would like Linda and the other members of the office to get input.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe the...maybe come back the first meeting of next month and...
Okay, because we're running out of time.
Yeah.
So should we make next meeting?
Is it possible?
Well, the next meeting is two weeks. But we're gonna do the special meeting to hammer out the web policy on Monday.
Is it possible for us to have her come in on that Sunday?
You want a special meeting to have her come in?
Well, that or add it to the...
Is Monday or is tomorrow? Because Lily, that's only giving her tomorrow to review it. So is everybody gonna be here?
Is that okay with you? I know you're really busy. But on Monday?
Well, I didn't know who was gonna be here. I didn't know if Ellen's gonna be out. I don't know if people's tenants. I need to schedule this for Monday to find out if Tom Clark's out tomorrow. She's not gonna be here.
Unfortunately, we can wait for everybody. Ellen will be out.
I could go over this with Ellen.
Then I'm fine.
Yeah, and just remember, once she's...once Polly submits it, we get one more option to make any adjustments.
Alright, so add her to the special meeting agenda for Monday. So we'll do web policy, but we'll do her update first before we...
Okay, so it's within the time is six.
Thank you, Polly.
Thank you, Polly.
Alright, so moral business, so moving on to new business. Jay landscaping?
Jeremiah.
Jeremiah?
Jeremiah.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me. So, morning, guys. We have a new crew here. Yes, nice to meet you. Thanks for being here. Uh, and we just have the cemetery. I think we've got quite a deal.
We're four here?
Yeah. Uh, I mean, here, we try and do, um, a digital lift, the cemetery. Uh, of at the...you guys... Uh, there's a lot of unrotten trees in there that are flowing. It's kind of a little steam bath, a little lethal. It starts flowing and over the years, we've kind of allowed that stuff down.
Okay.
Um, and then we do some, uh, dirt tacking along the tree line. We like, uh, the deflection stuff, so it's coming on and on. I have such a doc.
Okay.
Uh, we have seven cemeteries that we're making.
Seven?
Yeah. We have, uh, two baseball fields that we're making. Two lefty sports that we keep there. And we have ten, uh, weight treatments, uh, weight, uh, pump houses for ten pounds that we're making. And so we try and do a little bit of work. So, well, I'm actually putting a crew dog that spends up to, uh, twelve hundred and fifty dollars to maintain a pump housing, uh, that we're... And now, uh, diet them, uh, dirt tacking. Um, you know, usually we spend a whole twelve hundred and fifty dollars on pump housing. It makes myself the pain and it's pretty simple. We usually get less money and spend it for cemetery and improve the ground. Uh, last year, we cut a lot. He was clean. Uh, I'm not really nice. Let's talk to my teacher, if you wanna get down. Um, one of the photos, uh, with the last wall. That one there.
Yeah.
Uh, the vines, the trees, and he's taken over the wall, and I wanna, can't, I can't put it back.
Okay.
I would just like to say that, Jeremiah, I'm, I'm, he does a great job, and if there's ever an issue of automation, I text him, five seconds later, he's like, gone. So, he's always right there.
Thank you, and I wanna say thank you for standing the headstones upright, fixing the fences, because some of our cemeteries are pretty old.
Yeah, I, I think, putting the headstones back up, that's going to...
Really nice.
Thank you. So, uh, me, me, I'm at, it was twelve fifteen for the pump housing, and then it's twelve, uh, twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the cemetery, because I can't, uh, uh, so, uh...
Okay.
It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work. You do it just by yourself, or do you have...
No, I have a, I have a, no, I, I, I try, keep the water high down, do the most work as possible.
Okay.
Uh, we, we didn't take it out, I didn't hear a lot, but a little, uh, um, my, started four years ago, so now, it's, uh, a lot.
Nice.
And not in a, not on there, uh, all you recommend, you know, the garden, uh, we're in the fourth, I think, we'll try to come back, and...
Okay.
By eliminating a couple of junk, yeah, that, we'll have to let you...
So you're looking for twelve hundred and fifty dollars?
Well, uh...
For the pump houses, another twelve fifty for the cemetery.
Twenty-five hundred dollars total, so...
Split between the two.
I have to ask some questions with, uh, how does it compare to budgeting?
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, Paul, your budget for Dave.
Sorry.
What do we budget for, for landscaping?
Forty thousand.
And I guess, so, and, and the question is, I mean, this is, this is twelve fifty additional.
Right.
This is, what you're asking for is twelve fifty additional to what, uh, to what we've already contracted.
Yeah, I, I, the contract, and it goes for when, and it just, just bring them on, and all of it.
This is to cover the additional, right?
Right, that is what I'm...
And so this would be above the contract and house, so do we have any budget for it? I hope this...
Will we ask David questions? I feel like we need to generate heaps of money. Hot, hot silence.
Shout out for the panel fair this Saturday.
Yeah.
You have the floor.
Go ahead, go ahead, Harry.
Ten, ten to two, I can't, there was a fire.
Budgeted forty thousand dollars.
Actually, it's ten to ten.
Ten to ten, yes.
Ten to ten this Saturday.
We'll look.
Just trying.
The twenty, July twenty-seventh, ten to tens, uh, the panel fair, three forty-six, and lit fireworks at the end, so...
It's a good time, so you can go for a guided walk along the Vermont Town.
So, if you're looking for something to do for the family, come on down and enjoy yourselves.
Yep, take a walk by, on the new walking path, and then go to the fair.
Hey, Michael, you said it wasn't even close, right? I mean, it, it's not even close, right, it's, the contract's like twenty-six, we budgeted forty.
Seventy thousand, no, maybe thirty.
So we've got, I think we've got plenty of budget.
And let's do this.
I, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, we weren't blowing too much budget, because it was, it was a simpler question.
You just gotta remember, we have to sell the...
Yes.
We're gonna be doing that, so...
Right, oh, that's true, so that's a good question, like, that's, that's a very, right?
Jeremiah, how much did you estimate for selling the mobile?
I want, uh, the removal, I estimated, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, that, we only get paid, uh, no, you got, or they only, no, no, time, time, no, we paid, but, but, I, I can't see... I can't even, no, I didn't, I don't know, that, all the overkill.
I mean, and, and we can't predict the weather, so...
Yeah, we can have a spring winter, or we can have an arctic winter.
Are you doing shore move just at the town office, or do you do the pump houses a lot?
Um, this is the town office, the only thing I'm doing here is get the sidewalk, no, no problem.
I just see they have so many cemeteries, and some, some other grounds, flowers, uh, you see, there were lots of flags, which are already considered that budget, so, we probably need five hundred or so for that.
Okay.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is that the, what we budgeted is multiple sources of expenses, what we pay you, plus...
The snow, plus the flowers, flags, plantings.
And members of cemeteries are... So, can I motion to approve the twenty-five hundred dollars to Jay landscaping? For additional cemetery work?
You can motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the, uh, spending increase for Jay landscaping.
Oh, did I hear it wrong, I thought it was twelve fifty.
No, twenty-five, the town, and then cemetery, it's twenty-five.
Twelve fifty each. So we have a motion in a second to approve the spending increase for Jay landscaping, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jeremiah.
Thank you, Jeremiah, you do great work.
Now, I, I, you know, when I think, in the, I think, uh, you guys, uh, the, 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 uh, fair, uh, being a lot, a little, all tired, um, uh, when you die, we can pass any, any, um...
Uh, is that our table or the church's?
Our.
Okay.
Um, I, I was looking at, and he went, he, a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, but it's not the wood, it's the plastic type, going on a lot, a lot, a lot of things, and you guys, I didn't pass the, I was doing that car, and, um, buying, and... You guys, um...
Yeah, if you wanna bring in a proposal, like, picture of the little price thing for us to officially show us?
Uh...
He's prepared for that. You are good.
Look at this, that's what he's doing.
I, I, I'm thinking, you know, a hundred and fifteen, two hundred, man.
So, how about if we make a motion to, um, allow Jeremiah to replace the picnic table and not to exceed?
So, that's, that's...
Okay, we don't have an umbrella, so, we don't really get used as much as we would like to, and add an umbrella. I can donate an umbrella, would you like, would you like my umbrella, Linda? It's, it's dark brown, I, it's fine.
Oh, bad, everything.
Yes, we're not using it, so I will donate it.
So, my only concern is that, are we, are we spending money on something that doesn't get used and won't get used?
She doesn't have an umbrella, Bob. She has an umbrella now, now, what do you use, Bob? And it's free.
It's free.
No, it's a hundred and fifty dollars.
Uh, all right, well, you guys wanna take a look, there's a couple of different tables there, there's a four-sided and a two-sided.
Yeah, you can go up and down.
I think it's gonna get moved over to the new town office, so you might want to go with four-sided. You don't have to worry about that flip when people get off.
If that is falling apart, then that's a safety issue, right?
It is.
Yeah, I went to go sit on it today, and that back bench is just sitting there.
Don't you get it?
Four-sided.
That's your, oh, the four-sided?
Make a motion for not to exceed two hundred dollars.
Well, that one's one ninety-nine and change, so tax is gonna push it to like, what, ten, twelve?
It's so cash, not to exceed two, we don't have cash.
We'll have to.
What's your cost, what can you get it for, cost?
Uh, the store, I, uh...
Where, where, that was, Paulie, or what?
That was tractor supply.
Tractor, okay. So that's, yeah.
Authorizing to spend two hundred dollars to get a four-sided picnic table.
Uh, wait, what, yeah, that, my...
Yeah. All right, so I make a motion to approve, uh, Jay landscaping, to spend no more than two hundred dollars to get a four-sided picnic table to replace our rotted, unsafe picnic table. Right here, a second?
Okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Yeah, to, uh, buy a four-sided, to authorize Jay landscaping to buy a four-sided picnic table, not to exceed two hundred dollars, all in favor, say aye. Or any further discussion, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, all right, get out of here before we spend more of our money.
No, wait, wait, no, he waits, I have one more thing.
I have one more suggestion, this is for, uh, that, that, uh, 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 once for another, uh, town meeting, Tuesday night, and I know this is a small place, an old building, uh, thinking of another town hall, small building, they actually moved their meeting to the senior level, it was bigger, and a lot more people attended, which I thought was pretty nice, and pretty roomy, but I thought, maybe with the town of Toronto, the meeting might, maybe you guys, you, uh, the volume here, probably, maybe the larger, the meeting, it's a little more room, and, yeah, there's, you know, people.
We've actually, we've discussed those options before, and for the more hot button issues, and more passionate topics, we usually try to get the firehouse or the panel elementary school.
Oh, okay, yeah. But we have to make sure that we have, um, accessibility to a landline in order to allow board members to come into the meeting if they're out of town. And we can't get access to that at the firehouse or at the elementary school, so we have to be able to provide that, but thank you.
That is a good idea, but that's one of the many reasons why we're pushing to try to build a new town hall, to give ample space.
Yeah, absolutely. I, well, I...
All right, thank you, sir.
Do you want your town picnic, right?
Yep.
Okay, bye, thank you.
Bye, thank you, Jeremiah.
Did you want your pictures, Paul?
Uh, yeah.
Jeremiah, your check is right on my desk while you're here, you might as well grab it.
Okay.
You don't have to go in and pitch it out.
I was gonna say, you might need Linda to help me.
He knows where I can go.
All right, so, uh, that concludes new business.
Bye.
So, thank you, sir. All right, so, uh, I would make a motion then to go enter into executive session for personnel.
Oh, no, 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 we're going to Mr. Scully.
Oh, I'm sorry, for, I would say for legal, for Mr. Scully, thank you for inviting me, sorry. I'm so polite, I forgot you were there.
You're very good.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so, I have a motion.
I second you.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to enter into executive session for legal, for Mr. Scully, uh, all in, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.